It is my pleasure to call to order the Monday, November 21st, 2016, regular meeting of the Thirty-Sixth Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Edgar.
Edgar.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Gravlin.
Here.
Councilmember Kadekko.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
Councilmember Turbrack.
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer.
Thank you. The first order of the business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Turbrack with support from Councilmember Kadekko. Are there any changes or additions? Hearing and seeing none. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gravlin.
Yes.
Kadekko.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. I do not see Reverend Hal Sullivan here with us this evening, so if you will please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've now come to the portion of the agenda when you may present your thoughts on items that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is addressed. When the speaker has finished, please refrain from gestures of approval or disapproval, as this could be intimidating to some residents. And with that, when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of address.
Good evening. My name is Dan Mihajewski. I reside here in the City of Berkeley, and I'm also the chairman of the Berkeley Beautification Advisory Committee, and so tonight I wanted to announce the Holiday Spirit Award that will be taking place this year. As in the past, we'll be looking at homes that have an impressive display in front of their houses, and basically houses that have lights both inside, on top of their roofs, garages, et cetera, garland, and anybody who'd like to self-nominate may do so. We'll be taking all nominations via email, and that email address is BerkeleyBAC@gmail.com. Again, BerkeleyBAC@gmail.com. And for those who are interested in participating in the contest, those nominations will need to be received by December 12th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Jessica Wallace with the Berkeley Huntington Woods Youth Assistance, and I just wanted to come in today and thank City Council for your continued support of our organization. And as a reminder, Second Annual Snowman Shuffle will be December 3rd. Family Fun Run starts at 9:15, 5K at 10 o'clock, and our Afterglow will be at 12 o'clock at Patrick J's. And you do not need to run in the 5K or the Family Fun Run. Simply just bring a can of food for the Caring and Sharing Program. You'll get a raffle ticket to play in the Afterglow. Wanted to give a shout-out to our sponsors this year. We have Myers, Doggie in the Window, Palms Family Dentistry, Four Seasons Garden Center, and Fitness Fusion. So we hope to see everybody a week from Saturday out at Hurley Field. Thanks again.
Thinking, yeah?
Hi, my name is Lisa Kempner, and I live in Berkeley. Based on some comments, I wrote a little something. It's, and I'm sorry, there's some references to Mayor, but he's not here. It has been referenced by our mayor a few times now that there are groups that have an agenda that are criticizing and creating media attention. I do have an agenda. My agenda is that all city officials, whether elected, appointed, or employed, treat the residents with respect, listen to them, and follow their will as a whole, and protect them to the best of their ability. That hasn't been happening lately, and if my agenda is offensive to any board, we have a big problem. It has been a rough couple of months to be a city official. I can absolutely understand that. But there have been many opportunities for encouraging trust that have not been acted on, so problems persist. Residents say, "Stop blocking our sidewalks," and the city responds by issuing a decree for all builders to block all sidewalks. This is a problem. You all told PC to rewrite the 2015 amendment to remove the words "multifamily," and the city planner drafted a new amendment using synonyms for the word "multifamily," but not actually using the words "multifamily." This is a problem. The last PC meeting had a full house, and residents who had asked for the packet, had seen the packet, and came informed. Once they decided to scrap the amendment that the city planner wrote, amend slash create a new slash old one, and couldn't be bothered to make a few more copies so that the residents in attendance could follow along. At the end, the chair was unsure what was being sent to you, and those of us in the audience were definitely confused as to what was being sent to you. This is a problem. We asked for a copy of the packet for this meeting, for the Planning Commission. This one didn't contain the actual amendment. We had to ask for that. We have asked for copies of packets for PC countless times. These aren't things that should be kept secret. They aren't things we should ask for over and over again. There seems to be an issue with getting packets from the planner. She seems to be the only one who knows where they are, how to access them. This is a problem. If she's in a meeting, nobody can seem to access that information. We had been told time and time again that you cannot amend an amendment. Not that they didn't want to, not that they would prefer doing it right from the get-go, but that they couldn't for months. Then months later, they, in essence, and even by accident referenced it as such, amended the amendment. This is a problem. When residents point out problems, they are not out to destroy the city or a person. Actually, quite the opposite. This is how cities say great. This is how cities become the very best that they can possibly be. You need residents whose feet are on the ground, experiencing what goes on day-to-day, what problems are arising. When you listen to those, look into them, hold people accountable, and take action, then we continue to stay one of the best cities to live in.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, we will move on with the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approve of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular Thirty-Sixth City Council meeting on Monday, October 17th, 2016. Warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1308.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Support.
A motion has been made by Councilman Kadekko with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Gravlin.
Yes.
Kadekko.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Moving on to the regular agenda, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda?
Motion number M-8616, matter of authorizing the Planning Commission to distribute the Residential Future Land Use Master Plan Amendment pertaining to residential housing types to surrounding communities and underlying agencies for comment in accordance with the Municipal Planning Act.
Is there a motion to approve M-8616?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Kadekko. Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. We've come to the point in the process on our master plan amendments where the City Council now reviews this document and decides whether or not it is ready to be released for public comment from adjoining municipalities, the county utilities. There are, this is a 63-day review period that if council sees fit to begin, that would take us through January 24th, which would be the next time that the Planning Commission would be able to take a look at the language with the comments in hand and make any alterations to the wording that has been included during the review comment. This includes, you know, citizen comment. This includes utilities comments, the county's planning division, as well as adjoining municipalities. So you're not actually approving any of the wording this evening. The wording is still subject to change, depending on, like I said, the comments that come back. So there are a couple of items that ought to be pointed out as far as the changes. As was referenced during citizen comment, the bulk of this document is taken from the 2015 master plan that was passed. There are three, really three, large changes from the previous version of this. There is a reference in the 15 that has been struck to Oakland Manor as well as St. John's Woods. These items that now will not appear in the document moving forward. There is a rewrite of the section that discusses multifamily housing. This was done to protect the R1 district, and so it places emphasis in areas where it's already zoned. So a multifamily housing designation would have to already appear in a zoning district for it to be allowed to move forward consistent with this plan. There's also a rewrite of the section dealing with Woodward Corridor. Before, there was a reference to a quarter-mile of depth that should be considered for single-family homes. This has now been moved to adjacent, and the definition, according, we've been working with our city attorney, the definition of adjacent is the standard definition. So it would actually have to be next to the Woodward Corridor. They would have to share a border with the Woodward Corridor. Any properties that maybe even are one or two in would not be consistent with this vision. And it's, again, it's specific to permitted single-family residential areas. Currently, there are no permitted single-family areas that directly touch Woodward. So as it stands now, this would not affect any of our current parcels under this current zoning. They're allowed to have some residential, as long as it is above a commercial business along Woodward, like as in a mixed-use type development, but there are no permitted single-family uses along Woodward. So that's something that the Planning Commission put in there to protect the neighborhoods. Those are the three biggest changes to this document. Obviously, with the regional transit authority not being voted, and the affirmative, it does change the perspective. The Planning Commission spoke at length on how of what they call the game changer vote in the RTA ballot question. Obviously, with it not being passed, there could be some changes from the Planning Commission at that point, but again, this is not an approval now. Those are, like I said, the two, those are the biggest changes and the biggest ways to preface this. They did talk at length about this document and sending it forward to this body. Again, 63 days takes you to January 24th, which is the January Planning Commission meeting, so it would not appear on the agenda until that point. And those are, like I said, the biggest items I have from my chair. Amy, do you want to add to?
Yeah, I was just going to add that this step in the process is actually a change. It was done in 2008 when the state changed the Municipal Planning Act, and it was really because Planning Commissions do operate autonomously, assuming that there's a budget with regard to the master plan, and what the state had observed is you'd sometimes get Planning Commissions doing one thing in the city council, and you ended up with, I think probably in some cases, you had township boards or councils suing their own Planning Commission over things that were going on. And so this step saying, "You have to at least let the council look at it," or the village council, and then the next step is that is mandated, it was always good planning practice, was to, "You have to send this plan to the underlying agencies, the school districts, and the surrounding communities." While that was always good planning practice, it was not required, and now it is required. So these two steps were really about making sure everybody knows what you're doing. So like Mr. Baumgartner said, any comments, they would, whether it's at this meeting or between now and 63 days, whether it's from citizens here or surrounding communities, the Planning Commission will look at all that, and then they can take those into consideration and decide what they want to finally adopt.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or clarification on what we've heard so far before we...
I do want to offer one additional clarification.
Please.
On the paragraph speaking to changes on the Woodward Corridor, it does reference areas. I do want to note that there are multiple zoning districts along the Woodward Corridor. There's the Woodward District itself, and there's also an office corridor or office district. So the word "areas" is meant to encompass all zoning districts. This would have to be directly adjacent to a transit stop, but it could appear in any of the areas, the zoning districts. So I do want to clarify that point.
Great. Thank you. So what I think we'll do is we'll open up for resident comments next. I'd like to hear what they have to say, and then we can talk and decide where we want to go from here. So with that, I'd like to open up for input from residents.
Kurt Height, 35, 25, Robina. You know, obviously, some of what I was concerned about has been addressed already, but I do want to reiterate that I was concerned with the way that the wording that we finally received today was different than what we had heard when it was approved from the Planning Commission. And it just, I guess it concerns me that if it's read off a certain way, meaning that the notes were already taken, to me, there are certain words should have been consistent when the printout finally was distributed. And when I say that is, the way it says right now, it says apartments should be permitted in single-family residential areas, but as it was read off at the 2-hour, 20-minute mark, and I can play the recording if you guys would like me to, but as it was read off, it said that it could be considered. And I think that those are, could be considered is a world of difference between should be permitted and could be considered, because that's still kind of just saying that you guys could look at a plan and kind of consider it and really think about whether or not it really benefits Berkeley rather than should be permitted, being such a strong language saying that it's basically carte blanche. You know, it's going to be there regardless of what people may think about a plan or whatnot. You know, there were some other things, and, you know, listening when the Planning Commissioners were discussing, I understand you're saying area, and you're, to us, the word "area" now kind of sounds kind of broad where somehow, if something happens to connect it, it could, you know, the whole residential area could be affected. We thought that the way the discussion was going on, it kind of sounded like they were talking about residential lots that were adjacent to the business or office district versus a whole area. You know, because before, they were talking about a quarter-mile in or a half-mile in, but they were saying, "Let's make sure it abuts the Woodward Corridor," or the, you know, the areas that are already kind of business, you know, so that they wanted to make sure it didn't impede too far into the residential area. And that's what really concerned us. It was hard to follow along because we didn't, you know, we didn't really have our own sheets. We made our notes, and then when we looked at it and the next day, we realized, you know, it really leaves a lot. I mean, it could be very vague. I mean, it really opens the door for somebody to say, "Well, you guys say right here that the whole residential area that abuts a transit stop." And that was one thing, another thing too, is the wording in, when it was discussed, that the Planning Commission said for any new, newly constructed rapid transit stops, whereas the wording tonight that we're seeing says transit stops along Woodward Avenue, so it could apply to even transit stops that already exist. So it's not, you know, it's, I guess it's, you know, splitting hairs, but I think that that really should be for new develop, you know, if it's a new transit stop for some kind of a rapid transit, that's what they wanted to keep that line in for. So I really wanted to make sure that when they go forward, that it really specifies newly constructed mass transit, you know, not, you know, the bus stops are already sitting there, because that's, that could be considered a transit stop. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hello. My name is Dennis Henon. I live on Vermont in Berkeley. I want to start by saying I think the Planning Commission, I think specifically the Planning Department, could do a better job communicating. There are problems with the draft that we're looking at tonight, and it could have been made available to us weeks ago. I know the memo that is before you was written a week ago. The questions could have been answered, and the inconsistencies could have been worked out quietly behind the scenes, but instead, we finally get a copy only this morning, and that just leads to ramped-up emotions and that we have this to do in public. I think after the Planning Commission meeting, the impression that many were left was that there'd only be one or two pages that were approved, and everything else was left behind. That's certainly an impression that I came away with. However, the draft amendment tonight still contains all the objectionable supporting material from the original document. The point of the exercise, most of us thought, was to make a clean slate, get rid of that objectionable material, and then start the discussion in the future with calmer emotions after we've set this aside. We find that many of the facts used don't support the conclusions that were drawn. We think some of the facts that were presented were misleading, and people are afraid that approving this with all of the supporting material now will be used as evidence to support the very thing they're trying, they find objectionable, the multi-unit housing. Second problem is that some of the changes on the recommendation page don't reflect what was actually voted on by the Planning Commission. Kurt pointed out some of those, and, for example, the language near the mass transit stops in the draft before you is much more vague than they had fairly precise language at the Planning Commission. So understandably, it was hard to follow that meeting. It was confusing. There was a lot going on, but what isn't understandable is the first 40 minutes of that meeting were spent discussing bias in the minutes, and considerable time was spent discussing how the videos could be used as a tool to get things right. So I'm not suggesting that transcripts be made of the meetings, but something as fundamental as the language that was voted on could have been written out perfectly here using the videos as a tool for that. Then finally, the documents we have don't include any resolution passed by the Planning Commission. I'm not sure if that should be here or not, but it seems odd to be left out when it, now when it was part of the original amendment, and I know that it was discussed quite a bit at the Planning Commission. So at this point, I don't know what to think. I don't know if I'm asking you to reject. I don't know if I'm asking you to accept. I don't think anyone wants things held up more. I want to get past this, you know, get quickly, and I'm not sure if what I'm going to propose here is even permissible under the Michigan planning laws, but I think I'm suggesting that you approve the amendment conditionally, approve it for distribution conditionally on the Planning Commission accepting the following changes, that they remove all the supporting material, just keeping the last pages of the recommendations, that the recommendations be corrected to reflect what was actually said during the meeting, and that you exercise your right as the city council to approve the final version of the amendment before it's finally approved. So my hope is we can correct the problems, the Planning Commission can maybe even accept the changes tomorrow at their meeting, and then we can continue to move forward with this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Robertson. I live at 1964Dorothy. I am wondering if it's possible, moving forward, when we get the next amended draft, whatever you want to call it, can we have a copy of this a good seven days prior so that we are not scrambling every single time we come to a meeting? I don't know if it was Dennis or Kurt, but emotions are always high the morning of these meetings, and I just think that it would be healthier if we could have these documents a few days prior so that we can not freak out and we can figure out what's really going on. Is that possible, Mr. Baumgartner?
Off the top of my head, I don't see any reason why not.
We have asked for this, and it just hasn't happened, and it's November now. So can we please get a promise that when we get this next draft, when the language is taken out, that we have, I would like five business days at a bare minimum to review it as residents? I mean, we all know that there's the Facebook pages out there. You know, we could easily have it on Berkeley. We could have it on the forum. We could have it on the Berkeley Residential Against Rezoning. You know, other people want to weigh in, and I just feel like it would be much more cohesive and collaborative if we were all out there, you know, being able to review it instead of, I'm telling you, people are, I'm sick of it. I'm sick of the bait and switch. I want transparency. We were promised transparency. I've talked to you multiple times. You know how I am. I don't feel like I'm getting it, and I want to review this document five business days prior, not the morning of. Five business days prior.
Ms. Chair, between now and 63 days, the document shouldn't change, so we can absolutely make that available, and then it will be, remain intact until the Planning Commission sees it again. So if the Planning Commission makes any changes to it between the, I'm sorry, let me make sure I got my phrasing correct. So between the day that they go back and take a look at it, consider any comments, and then set a public hearing, we should be able to have that document out there, provided for anybody who wants to see it in advance of the public hearing. So we have to have that out for, I believe, at least 14 days, 14 to 21 days. John, you can clarify. But, yeah, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to do that, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Stern, do you have any additional comments on timing?
It's actually 15 days, but you're close.
Nice. Well, 15 seems in excess of five business days, so it seems like that'll work in your favor for sure.
As long as it happens.
Absolutely.
It has to happen. Okay, thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you.
I have a question about the resolution part of it. So the 2015 one, the very last page, I believe, on it, had a number of "whereas," you know, that really said, "This is what we're trying to do with all of this information." This one didn't have that. Should that have been there at this part of that, or does that come much, does that come later?
That's later. That would be, that would be at the time the Planning Commission approves the master plan amendment, which won't be until February at the earliest.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not quite to that step yet. That's another couple of steps down from where we are right now.
Okay. So basically, just the recommendations basically tell cities, utilities, all of the people that they're supposed to be informed, this is kind of where we're leaning, and then when they specifically adopt it, that's when they get very specific with what we're trying to do.
Right now, it's just, right now, it's just a draft where it's being distributed first here, and then depending what happens here, then it goes to these other local public agencies, all to provide input, which the Planning Commission will...
Use to define...
...at the end of that 63 days, and then when the Planning Commission believes it's ready to go forward to public hearing, that's when, you know, depending on how that public hearing goes, and they're ready to adopt something, that's when they would have the resolution with all the recitals and the, you know, the reasons. But we're not quite there yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, I see Commissioner Dean Smith is here. I wanted to read his actual motion regarding the transit-oriented development study that he revised in his motion at the last Planning Commission meeting. What he stated was, "In accordance with the Transit Orient Development TOD study that was adopted as part of the master plan by the Plan Commission 2012, apartments and other multifamily housing could be considered in single-family residential areas that are adjacent to any newly constructed bus rapid transit stops along Woodward Avenue," is what Kurt Height was referencing. And this, he made, when I was in the meeting, he made sure to emphasize "could be considered." So I think that's important to reflect in these recommendations. I understand now that it could be revised later on when it's distributed to other communities, but I think it's, I think it's important to get that clarified before it's distributed to these communities, along with the other recommendations that were... to these communities, along with the other recommendations that were, that were mentioned. Hearing, the terminology for adjacent is, is encouraging to me. I just think replacing it, it's, it's the areas portion that concerns me. I think instead of residential areas, it should state lots that are directly adjacent, tending newly constructed bus rapid transit stops along Woodward Avenue. I think those are important changes that need to be made to reflect what was discussed at the meeting and the wishes of the residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Kurt Hight again. I just wanted to clarify, I wanted to make sure, now, I understand that we might not see any of the other input, like, reflected until the public hearing. But now what about as far as, like, when we're talking about corrections versus what was voted on, what was read out, and what, what was approved versus what we're reading tonight? Can we expect to see that that wording will at least get, so that reflects what was actually voted on during the planning commission meeting? You know, because that stuff is, to us, that, that kind of is a world of difference on its own, where we don't see any reason why that couldn't be corrected based on the official transcripts, which are the videos online, versus what we see on paper right now. We feel that that, that step could happen, you know, now, by tomorrow night even, so that when we see it reflected online when it's posted, we see what verbatim what was, what was said at the meeting. So hopefully, we can get an answer on that tomorrow night, or even tonight.
Thank you. Comments on the?
Actually, I defer to our city attorney on this, but this body is not able to make any changes to that document. John, if you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I, I think that's right. And there, there was another comment made about the, you know, the city council, it's not by Mr. Hight, but by a prior speaker, about the city council, you know, exercising its right to, you know, condition any motion tonight on the council finally approving the language. And I just kind of wanted to clarify, there really is no such right under the law. The master plan is the planning commission's document. It's the planning commission's plan to approve. So, you know, that type of condition would really be, not to comply with the law, but really would be usurping the, the law. So I just wanted to clarify that. The, the city council can definitely provide, provide input and feedback to the planning commission, but it's ultimately the planning commission's plan. But let's not lose sight that that's all it is, is the plan. It's a master plan. The law is the zoning ordinance. And the, and the zoning ordinance doesn't change unless and until this body approves it, after going through the whole process. And so, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to be dismissive of any of the concerns expressed here tonight, but I just don't want us to get too caught up in making a, you know, too fine a point over what's really just intended to be a master plan, which really by, you know, common definition, it's, it's going to be more generally worded and more generally phrased than an ordinance would.
No, I understand that. We, we, you know, we've been all over that repeatedly as far as whether what's considered law or whatever. But if I could just ask Ms. Vanson, do you think we could see it updated for tomorrow night, and, and so that it reflects the official transcripts?
Again, as you all watched that meeting, there was Mr. Smith, who I invited to this meeting, I asked him to be here since it was his amendment. There was a lot of back and forth on the TOD and so forth. Ms. Boucher looked at my minutes to make sure that they reflected the amendment to the amendment. There was a lot going on. It was my intention to capture Mr. Smith's motion. I read it back. I will certainly get with Mr. Smith. It's my intention to make sure that it's correct. But again, I did read it at the meeting, and I thought I had captured it here. If I have not, I will certainly get with Mr. Smith. But again, I think the council can move forward. Depending on the day, I may or may not have a chance to get to it. It's, depends on how the day goes tomorrow. So I will certainly, it's my intent, if the council moves forward, to get it in the mail so the 63 days start chipping away. But I definitely want to make sure it's correct, and I will get Mr. Smith to make sure that I have the language corrected.
Thank you. Mr. Stern, any additional comments on that?
Yeah, and really just following up or flowing from Ms. Vanson's comments, I, I just wanted to make just another point. Again, not, it's not my intention to be dismissive of anybody's comments and concerns. I realize nobody would be here if we weren't all taking this very, very seriously, but just so that there's no misunderstandings or, or inferences that something untoward is going on here. It is common practice, and in fact, it's the reason we have professionals like Ms. Vanson, you know, on staff. The planning commission is doing these things on the fly. They're doing these things in a group setting. They're doing them with a lot of people present, and we're trying to craft documents which, to, to reflect what, what, you know, nine different people are thinking at the time. It's, it's very difficult to do. And it really is common practice in this community, and really every other community I've come across, to expect your, your staff and your professionals, your planner to, I'm going to use the terms, to clean up the language a little bit when they are doing this, keeping in mind that ultimately, the planning commission has to approve this. But when we hear, just, you know, taking the example, I heard a couple speakers refer to tonight, that, that the language that was stated at the meeting was "could be considered." And what's reflected in here tonight is "should be permitted." "Could be considered" is very vague and very ambiguous. That is not a term that I would recommend be left in a plan. I think you need to say something, I mean, some people may view it as being a too strong of a statement, but you can't say "could be considered." That's ambiguous. You have to either say something's permitted, or, or something isn't permitted, or else it's really a meaningless statement. So I think that was the effort here. Nothing nefarious, but rather to eliminate, not to add ambiguity to the document. But again, ultimately, the planning commission has to look at this, and the planning commission will ultimately, after another public hearing, you know, make a determination on exactly what the language should be.
Thank you.
Hi, Wendy Zabramsky on Garden Row Avenue in Berkeley. I think what they're trying to say here is a document you have in front of you that says recommendations, the paragraph that says in accordance is not what the planning commission voted on. Okay? That's what they're trying to get to. And he has the recording, he can play it for you, so you can hear what was said. It was not, they did not approve that paragraph. It was not that way. So if he would play that for you, you can hear, she, she read back what they were approving, and that's not what this says.
Dennis Henan again. I want to, I was the one that recommended exercising your right to review, and I just want to clarify that point. I reread the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act today to re-familiarize it myself before this meeting. And the, my understanding from reading that is, one of the final steps that can be exercised is the legislated body, in this case, the city council, can exercise their right to approve or reject, not approve or reject, the plan as the final step. And if it is rejected, it is recommended that they make recommendations on specifically what changes they are looking to, and it goes back to the planning commission for reconsideration, and the steps continue again on the, with the public hearing portion, and redrafting that, sending it to the legislating body again, and, you know, continuing until it's approved. That is the step that I was recommending be taken.
What's being referred to, it would actually be in the Michigan Planning Act, not the Zoning Enabling Act. I'm sure you just made a minor misspeak, but I understand, I read this stuff every day, so it's, it, it's easy for me to, to do that. But what you're referring to is, there is a threshold decision that, that the council makes, and that is whether it wants to be in the position of making a final decision on the master plan. Okay? The Berkeley City Council, not just these folks here, but their predecessors, have always deferred to the collective wisdom of their appointed planning commissioners to make that determination. So basically, to leave ownership of the master plan with the planning commission. So those steps that you're talking about in the right of the city council to basically set that condition, make these changes if you want us to approve it, that occurs if and only if the council has made the threshold decision that they are going to be the final approving body. And in the case of Berkeley, they've made actually the opposite determination in the past, and it, and it hasn't been revisited. So that, again, the decisions are ultimately those of the planning commission. The council can provide input, but, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but again, let's not lose sight that this is a plan, and none of this gets implemented unless and until a zoning ordinance is, is adopted. And none are proposed, none are being considered, and ultimately, it would be these folks up here who would, you know, who would make that decision. But that's, we, we talked about the approval, the, or the adoption, master plan steps still being a couple of steps down the road. But we're, if we're talking about a zoning ordinance amendment, it's not even down the road. The road isn't even, the road's not even under construction yet. So, so it's, it's, again, not to make light of the, of the concerns, but making too fine a point of, of things now just is, is probably not a real productive exercise for any of us. It's really not the right time to tie things that tightly. We need to give the planning commission some leeway to develop their plan.
Thank you. I do think that, that where we're at in the process, this, this kind of input is helpful for the planning commission as they begin that journey. And I do like the idea of having the plan reflect our collective best interests, and I appreciate the fact that we have additional steps down the road where language and suggestions that we've heard tonight can be, can be considered by the planning commission in more detail. So I think the, the road is ahead for us. Yes, hello again.
Hi. On that note, really quick, I would love to encourage you all to talk about maybe exercising that power, because as we saw the last time, it kind of was a hot mess, because there wasn't enough input, or there was a very clear plan that didn't represent what the residents wanted very clearly. So maybe a little extra oversight isn't a horrible thing.
Thank you.
Sorry, Lori Robertson, I have one more thing to add. So, Mr. Stern, I agree that, I don't think that it's necessarily nefarious, but I think part of the problem is, why I am skittish, is because PC says one thing, we get another. So, the rug keeps getting pulled out from under us. And I want to believe that it's not, you know, on purpose. I want to so believe that this isn't, you know, anything. But everything has been not what they've said. We're going to have an open house, we're going to talk about future land use. Nope, it's about multifamily. The survey was about multifamily. They, they ignore us, you know? I mean, then we have to come to you guys constantly. We're going to pull the language, the letter comes out, we're all celebrating, yay, the letter came out, they're going to pull the language. And then the 2016 amendment comes out, and I'm like, you have got to be kidding me. That was a huge slap in our face, huge slap in our face. So that's why we're all up here upset again. We don't, I don't want to be, I don't want to be doing this anymore. I want to go back to my family, I want to go back to my life, I want to go back to working. I have to spend my whole day today dealing with all of this, because this is not what they said was going to happen. So when is that going to stop? When is that going to stop? No one can answer that. And that's, I think, a huge problem.
Thank you for the additional comments. Others, other comments?
Hi, Paul Schreli, I live on Royal. I, I do like what I see here with the November 2016 proposed recommendation. However, I, I would urge, I guess, the city council to reject it for now. I think some of the things that we hear from the discussion with the planning commission versus what we see here, I do see that there's some vagueness in both what we see here tonight and what was talked about during the planning commission meeting. I think more unequivocal language is preferred. I understand that this is only supposed to be a template or a guide that kind of helps us lead, lead down the road to development, but I think that perhaps we could find something that strikes more of a balance between what we see here and the intent and kind of the things that were discussed during the most recent planning commission meeting. And other than that, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You as well. Other comments? Distinguished gentleman in the back?
Thank you. Dean Smith, Larkmore Street, I'm sorry, Larkmore Boulevard. One, I apologize for being late. I, I got tied up on something else and missed some pretty relevant discussion. I want to give you a couple of comments. One, Mr. Stern, the "could be considered" is a term that I used because the whole idea of the mass transit, we didn't know what was going to happen with the village vote, so I was looking as an "if then" type statement. So if the village passed, we could consider. Given that the village didn't pass, that entire paragraph could be stricken or rewritten. My personal value is that if mass transit does, or rapid mass transit does come along the Woodward corridor, it is an absolute game changer for the city of Berkeley, and I would hate, in fact, I will not have a document with my name on it, that says we would not consider anything that supports mass transit. That's, I can't be any more clear than that. With the, there was something else that was said. Oh, as it relates to, I think it was Joshua Hunter had a letter that he turned in tonight, and was looking for a, something that would be immediately adjacent or whatnot. I'm not a property attorney, but I have been involved in a number of disputes as to what adjacent is. And if that kind of language would be adopted, I think it would be a but. And that would be, again, 180 degrees different from what I was considering when I drafted the rewrite of the 2015 amendment. My thought is, if there's a mass transit, rapid mass transit stop that, say, went in in front of Westbourne, properties that a but Westbourne, of course, they may be considered for a redevelopment into multifamily, but it'll also be something that's within convenient walking distance. So we need to be careful, or at least I need to be careful to be very clear about my intent. One, that paragraph is, now, you could strike it, and all you're doing is sending a message to the adjacent communities, or the nearby communities, that Berkeley isn't interested in participating in rapid mass transit. That's your call. But if you have any questions at all about what I was intending to do as I drafted the proposed amendment, which ironically was intended to speed removal of the entire discussion of multifamily, as I sit tonight, now we're looking maybe two, three, four months down the road, we can finally have the language that stirred the pot taken out of the master plan. So my intent was to get the whole thought of rezoning off the table and do it as quickly as we could. Apparently, that hasn't worked.
Well, we have an opportunity to, to see what we can do yet tonight. Any questions for Commissioner Smith while he's here? Thank you for your time, by the way, again.
Oh, my pleasure.
Questions specific?
Yeah.
Mr. Stern, council member.
Mr. Smith, I, I agree with, with you. One, I want to thank you for redrafting the amendment so that we could, and I understand, completely agree with the purpose, to try to eliminate the offensive language, the multifamily language, as quickly as possible. I understand that it may have been cumbersome and very convoluted. I understand that it may have been cumbersome and very convoluted, and the fact that we didn't have it prepared ahead of time was primarily based on, you know, you and whoever you spoke with that day, you know, feeling that this would have been the correct way to move and the most expedient way to get that language out and protect the R1 district. My only question, again, I'm one person up here, and I want to do the same thing. I want to make sure that we get rid of the offensive language as quickly, as legally as we can do it. The big issue, the paragraph that seems to be creating, most of the stir today is the TOD paragraph. I'm not, I just don't know that us removing that paragraph from this, even though we still have the study, is part of the master plan, I don't think that removing that paragraph sends that signal that we don't want to be involved personally. I mean, we drafted this in 2015, things do change, things have a way of changing. I do think that if down the road, there is transit that has a opportunity to come into the city, I don't think any of us here are disagreeing with that, and I'm not speaking for anybody else, I'm just speaking for me. But if that is causing so much trouble right now, and I don't see in the near future, at least five years longer, transit stops, rapid transit stops popping up, I don't have a problem personally if that's recommended to be stricken from this amendment. I don't think it sends, at least for me, I don't think it sends that message. I think it sends a message that we're responsive to our community, we kept it in there, waited, saw what happened as a result of the election, now we are able to kind of pivot and change if we need to, and I am not opposed to changing. And if something does come back around, and that there is another opportunity for funding for transit, because I, we do certainly need it, I think we can then be flexible and pivot again and make sure that we are a partner. I just don't think it sends as strong a message. I'm not disagreeing with your opinion, it's your opinion certainly, and your name would be on the document as well. I'm just speaking from reacting to what happened. We saw the results of the election. If it is such a sticking point right now, and something that is a concern, I wouldn't be opposed to removing that paragraph personally.
Understood.
Councilmember Kedekel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protown. I concur with Councilmember Turbrak's comments about not removing that. I don't know how many of you know, but rapid transit did pass in Berkeley by 19%. So, I mean, the people of Berkeley voted overwhelmingly for the rapid transit. Unfortunately, it didn't pass. He says five years, I don't even know if I'll see rapid transit here in my lifetime, not to know how long I'll live, but, I mean, it sounds like we're gonna be starting over again and, you know, laying the foundation again for another vote, or another idea of bringing it north, and I don't see that happening in the too near future either. So I would concur with, you know, I have no problem with the paragraph either. Thank you. Thanks for your work.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
One last question.
I'm sorry, please.
Sorry, Mr. Smith, do you see the draft we're looking at? Do you think this reflects what you were intending to change at the last planning commission meeting?
I looked at it very quickly, I didn't pore over every detail, but directionally, it's accurate.
Okay. And any changes would be implemented as we see steps down the road to address concerns that we were hearing tonight, or possibly that could arise from other communities?
Absolutely.
As far as rewording and making it more specific.
These are living documents that change. I just, so many times in my business career, one word, you know, changes a contract, one word changes a proposal.
Yeah.
So we need to be very careful how we write these things. My value system is that I don't like to slam doors. So the whole idea of, oh, mass, rapid transit could come, do we want to make it so we have to work to open a door here in the city of Berkeley, or do we want to have a door that's partly ajar, and we can begin a discussion? That's just my style, is I don't like to ever say, no. So that's why I wrote the amendment the way that I did. And the idea was to get the offensive language out, get that approved quickly, and allow us to move forward. And I can see that I failed, so.
I wouldn't say that you failed.
No, no, no.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say at all that you failed. Had you not presented this amendment, I think we would still be, the planning commission meeting would still probably be going on.
Well, the eyes that are pouring into my bed indicate that I did fail, so I will do better next time.
Thank you for your service. I do agree with the expediency that brought us here tonight, and I look forward to, I think there may be an extra comment or two, and then we can, we can talk about our thoughts for moving forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry for bugging you one more time. First of all, I wanted to make sure that it's clear that, you know, as was pointed out during the planning commission meeting, there is a section in the master plan that addresses transit. So if you're also wanting to make sure that a message is sent that Berkeley supports mass transit, you can also make that comment, you know, that intent there. But I do want to say to Mr. Dean Smith, you know, the intent tonight of us coming forward was not to say that we felt that he failed. We really appreciate the effort that he put forward last planning commission. We, you know, the way that he went about it, and the way that he tried to address the multifamily housing, we feel that, you know, he did a very good job, considering that, you know, he came up with the idea, and he did it in the evening before, or, you know, one person working on it is very hard. I mean, I've seen, you know, I'm fortunate enough to work with a few people together collaboratively, and still even then, you miss certain things. But nobody getting up here, I don't think anybody getting up here had the intent of criticizing him or saying that he failed, because, you know, he did an immaculate job. And while some people might get up here and say, oh, well, we didn't want to see any kind of wording at all, you kinda gotta give and take a little bit, you could understand what his intent was by if the mass transit, rapid transit had been adopted, he wanted to kind of give that opening. And I don't think that if it had been approved, or if, even if the wording had come across more similarly to what had been read back and that they approved, I don't think anybody really would have complained about it too much. It was just the fact that it was, the meaning right now is vastly different even than what was read. And that's really what it was. It's not that Mr. Smith failed. I just want to make sure that that's clear. I don't think that anybody that I talked to said, oh, Dean Smith, he really dropped the ball on this one. Because I don't think that was the case. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that as well, and I do echo the sentiment that I thought, thanks to you taking that brave step forward to suggest an alternate amendment, was able to open that door so that we could have this conversation tonight. So I want to, my gratitude to you as well, for you and your colleagues for taking that bold step forward to bring us where we're at tonight. The esteemed chair of said committee is here for us as well. Chairman Burnett.
Thanks. I want to defend Dean, too, because Dean called me at work, and we had a long conversation on that the day before when we were, he was working on it and what have you. Yes, rapid transit failed, but rapid transit is going to be right back to you, see all of you in the next two years. And to throw it out, at this point, I wouldn't throw it out. I'd rather have this amendment go through the way it is, correct it, and make any corrections when it comes back. That's what I'd like to see. But rapid transit is not dead in this area. You will see it back in two years. Will it look exactly what it was that we just failed? Probably not. There'll probably be some very changes in it. I've heard people talking about it, and I think you'll see something a lot sooner than you think, because it didn't fail by that much in most of the communities. So I hate to see you, see us drop that right now. I'd rather leave it there, deal with it when it comes back after we have the 63 days. My comments.
Yep, and to your point, that's the step on our timeline here, the 63 days would take us to, as our city manager mentioned, the January 24th meeting would be the opportunity to continue this conversation. Yes, hello.
Hi, Wendy Zabramski again.
Hi, Wendy.
I just wanted to clarify, I don't think any of us were, didn't like the wording of it. I think what they did that night, what Steve did, was fantastic. It's just that what they approved that night is not what's written down. When Amy read back at that meeting, what the proposal was, what the wording was, it's different tonight than what it was. And that is everybody's concern.
Thank you. So, we have before us a decision to move the draft forward for review, knowing that there's several opportunities left in our timeline to make these adjustments and corrections as appropriate that keeps us moving forward. This input is certainly not the last time that we will hear this input. We also heard a couple other things. I think we're very positive in the sense that the documents will be made available far ahead of time, which I think is the right thing to do, and we want to continue that pattern going forward. So with that, I'd love to entertain additional dialogue from my colleagues. Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
If we wanted to-
Councilmember Steadman.
Okay, I'm sorry. If we wanted to change anything in this, we would have to send it back to the planning commission now and not act, act on this till later. Is that correct?
That's correct. Any changes have to be made by the planning commission, not by the council.
Right.
We can either vote to send it out.
Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. Vote to send it out, or vote it down, and it'll go back to the planning commission.
That's right.
And go through their process again. And that will delay it a very minimum of two weeks, for sure. And could be longer than that. So that is our decision, right there.
Other comments, other input?
Yep.
Councilmember Turbrak.
So we can't make any changes tonight. I think we understand that, up here at least, but that doesn't mean that the document isn't, can't be changed. That can be changed. Us, if, you know, a majority vote to move this forward today, it just means that we are moving it forward, we're not approving any language. There will be opportunity for the language to be changed, fixed, what was intended, whether it was written on this paper or not. I mean, this is not the final document. My concern with this, one, is timing. Obviously, adding, putting more time between the completion of this process, which was started in the summer, and it was a very long, arduous summer for many of us, as well as many of you out there. But we need to make sure that this is taken care of correctly, that we understand clearly what the residents want and what they don't want, and I think that is, that is the spirit of this, and that's what Mr. Smith did so eloquently at the last planning commission meeting, even if that happened without having enough, you know, prior time to hand out papers and make copies, because it was just a recommendation that he was making at the meeting. We didn't know, nobody knew how long it was gonna go, Mr. Smith, I'm sure didn't know if that was gonna be something that his colleagues were going to agree with or not. That's why there wasn't any, you know, upfront there. As far as why the rest of the document may not have been handed out, that's a separate situation. I don't have the right answer on that. I can only say that. I am struggling right now with sending this back to the planning commission tonight with voting against moving it forward, because I just feel like that is going to delay the process further. Whether we, I mean, if we send it back, and those corrections get made, and then it gets sent out, the opportunities to change it still exist down the road. It's not, I just, I don't want, you know, residents to think that if we're approving this today, it means that we are necessarily approving language. We are very clearly not approving the language, and I have already expressed some concern that I personally have over language as it stands in this, that I would like to see maybe altered slightly. Nothing super substantive, but just a couple words here and there that may change the meaning. I don't disagree with that. But I am leaning much more towards moving it forward today, because I do believe that the residents are very in tune to what's happening right now. The planning commissioners are obviously very in tune to what the residents are saying, I hope, right now. I think they, obviously, this amendment in front of us right now is a direct reaction to that. I'm confident that the changes that the residents would like to see, whether it's removing that paragraph or not, I guess that can come up at a public hearing, and I'll have an opportunity, like everybody else, to express my opinion on that paragraph, and what it means for us in the future. But I think that will happen. I'm confident. I don't think, I'm confident that that will happen. I'm confident that this amendment will end up the way that we want it to, and most importantly, it's going to keep multifamily housing out of the R1 district much sooner and much more expediently than what it may take. And I just would hate to see us take a couple steps backwards after we have, despite the fact many people may not think that we've actually made a lot of progress. It took a long time to make that progress, a number of meetings, a lot of discussion with residents, but we are actually here today with an amendment that nullifies and, you know, pretty clearly says that it's not allowed in the residential district. That's what I think the residents want, that's what we want as well, and that's what I am voting to move forward with today. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks. Any other guests? Councilmember Gravlin.
As a planning commission liaison, I've heard and watched up close this whole discussion from beginning to end, and I just don't want to lose sight of why it was messy, and I will not argue with it all. It's been messy and convoluted at times, and we all agreed to that wholeheartedly. The last meeting, I didn't have a copy of Dean's handwritten changes either, so I was kind of following along haphazardly as well. But the why it happened that way, it was because we heard you loud and clear, and it took a very circuitous path to get there, that you wanted it out of the residential. And we finally got through Dean's comments, through Dean's changes, that this would be, we're gonna get it out and then start over. And to go back now does feel like it'd be taking a step back, and we're not firming up this language, and Dean's the one who articulated the language to begin with, so when it gets back to them, they will make sure it's what their intent was, what his wording was, and I do have confidence they will make that happen. But given that, the spirit is, we heard you loud and clear, and we want to keep moving this forward, and therefore, I would agree with Mr. Turbrak that moving it along tonight is the right thing to do, and we will come out with the proper ending. And that is all.
Thank you. Okay, what we are voting on tonight is effectively a process, oh, I'm sorry.
One more comment, thank you.
Yes.
I think we-
Herr Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. We all agree that we don't want multifamily in the residential area, and I agree with my colleagues that not sending this out tonight is gonna delay us even longer, because we've got the process, it's right there. How we do it, we just gotta get the wording down and fine-tune it, and that can be done later on in the process. So I'm gonna vote for this, because I want to get this out of here. I want to make everybody happy, and, you know, you guys can go do what you want to do, have some more free time, and same with us, so that's my point.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, this is a process step for us to consider tonight, and I want to thank the residents for your thoughtful input, and I want to thank our planning commission, especially to those here in attendance, to share their additional thoughts and perspectives. Thanks to my colleagues for your thoughtful insights as well, and for clarity on the steps going forward. Thanks to staff and administration for helping keep us on track with this. So unless there's any other, any other comments? All right, let's, Ms. Blanchard, would you please call the roll on M-8616?
Kedekel.
Yes.
Steadman.
Yes.
Turbrak.
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Blanchard.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. Okay, thank you. This motion has passed. Ms. Blanchard, would you please read item number three on tonight's regular agenda?
Resolution number R-3616, Madam Attorney, authorizing the execution of the Public Unit Master Signature Authorization Agreement between the City of Berkeley and Flagstar Bank to provide the necessary authorizations for deposits, withdrawals, and other basic bank business on behalf of the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R-3616?
Motion to approve.
Support.
A motion has been moved by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Councilmember Steadman. Mr. Baumgarten.
Mr. Mayor Protown, this is not something you would think a person would normally be excited about, but I actually am, because it gives me the opportunity to introduce our brand-new- our brand-new finance director. Come on down. Yeah, stand up. Sabrina comes to us from the City of Novi. She brings a wealth of experience, and if you take the step of adding her name to the Public Unit Master Signature Authorization, that'd be just one of those things that the finance director does, and we'd be in very good hands with Sabrina's experience. So I'm very happy to have her here with us today.
Great, thank you. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. Ms. Boucher, first of all, I want to thank you, welcome aboard. Thank you for being here. And with that, Ms. Boucher, if you'd like to, please call the roll on R-3616.
Steadman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four on tonight's regular agenda?
Resolution number R-3716, matter of electing to comply with the provision of Public Act 152 of 2011 by exercising the city's right to exempt itself from the requirements of the Act for calendar year 2017.
Is there a motion to approve R-3716?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Has been moved by Councilmember Turbrack, with support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Derbaumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protown. The Public Act 152 was enacted in 2011, and it gave cities a couple of different options on how to allocate health insurance costs. It gave a city three choices. There's a hard cap number, there is an 80/20 split, and then there's an opt-out. And since 2011, the City of Berkeley has opted out annually. That's the choice that works best for the City of Berkeley and for our city employees. It provides us some financial stability. It's not something that certainly does not put us in any financial danger or disregard. It's something that's worked well for, the City of Berkeley's been able to provide to its residents. We are very close to the hard cap number this year, so we're still within the spirit of the law, but annually, we have chosen to opt-out, and the recommendation from my office, as well as the finance office, is that we continue that precedent and opt-out again for 2016, 17.
Thank you. Any discussion, any comments, questions? So again, this is something that we do on an annual basis. It's routine for us since 2011, and by taking this step, we'd be continuing to preserve and protect the employees' interests as defined by prior precedents.
Yes, sir.
Just one last, just adding with that, and this is also consistent with the current labor agreements that we have. Yes, that's important to note, important to note.
Yep. Thank you for that additional clarity.
Sure.
So seeing no other, no other input, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-3716?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. Motion has passed. Moving on, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five on tonight's regular agenda?
Motion number M-8716, matter of appointing Finance Director Sabrina Leela to the Public Safety Pension Board, with a term expiring on July 1, 2018, to replace City Manager Matthew C. Baumgarten.
Is there a motion to approve M-8716?
Mr. Mayor Protown, it is my honor and pleasure to move, to support, M-8716.
Wow, with an incredible motion like that. Who would like to jump to be the second on that one?
Support.
Excellent. Mr. Baumgarten.
Yes.
With enthusiasm.
With enthusiasm, I will report that my, when I was appointed to this board, it was intended to be a short-term appointment to replace the vacancy left by our former finance director. Now that we have replaced that position, Sabrina will be added to that board, because there is a heavy financial component with the pension boards and, you know, actuaries, and like forecasts and things like that, items that are much more suited, and has been our precedent to have the finance director fill that role. So as you recall from last meeting, you did appoint Darshell Strickland-Love to represent administration on that board, so this way, you'll still have a member of the manager's office, as well as a finance director on that board, as well as members from the Public Safety Department, Mike Crom, as well as a citizen appointee. So this is the last step of the process. This actually gets us back up to a full and functioning board.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Hearing none.
Makes sense to me.
So, thank you. Ms. Boucher, with enthusiasm, would you please call the roll on M-8716?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
And Baker?
Yes. This motion has passed. Ms. Boucher, now would you please read item number six on tonight's regular agenda?
Resolution number R-3816, matter of adopting revisions to the merit system of human resource management as proposed by the City Manager.
Is there a motion to approve R-3816?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Steadman?
Support.
With support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Derbaumgarten.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protown, these are items that actually you met in closed session to discuss some updates to, I don't know if Darshell, she isn't here, okay. Darshell is actually, this work preceded my joining the City of Berkeley. Darshell's been working with our former finance director, as well as our current finance director and our labor attorneys, in order to make some much-needed changes and updates to the merit system. It had fallen behind just a little bit from some of the current practices that you find in most other communities. Darshell has put an amazing amount of work into making sure that, again, we've got great protections for our employees, as well as our ability to render to the citizens good government. So I don't know if Darshell wants to speak to some of those items or not. But again, these are, a lot of these items you've covered in a previous meeting, too.
Good evening. As Mr. Baumgarten said, this is, has been an opportunity to actually update a lot of the language in the merit system document. There was a lot of sort of, I call it old-world, he-she kind of language, which is kind of cumbersome, but in addition to that, it adds some other clarity for employees who have been trying to understand the policies. I believe the language is much easier to read, and believe it will be fair to everyone.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. Question about paragraph 808, military leave. It is, it doesn't cover everything it should cover, as far as I'm concerned. It does not cover National Guard or Armed Forces Reserve personnel that are called to active duty.
We actually do follow the federal requirement for that. We did not place it in this document intentionally. There's a couple of other federal requirements that we have not placed here, only because they do change. We've had at least one incident that I'm aware of, where one of our public safety officers was called to active duty, and we followed the law for him.
I know we're following the law, I was just surprised that it wasn't in here, but does it say somewhere else that we're following the federal U.S.R., you, whatever it is, E.R. I.S.A. law?
It is not referenced in that way, but it is, the essence of it is here.
I just want to make sure that that's guaranteed for our people, so that they have, they get all the benefits and get their job back when they come back.
They will absolutely be entitled to everything the federal law says they are entitled to. No discrepancy there at all.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I want to thank the deputy city manager for all your work in helping move this through the process here and bringing it forward for us tonight, for consideration. Hearing no other questions, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-3816?
Gravlin?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. Motion has passed. Thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven on tonight's regular agenda?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2017, application, and the approximate amount of $31,914 to fund eligible projects.
Great. Mr. Baumgarten.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor Protown, I appreciate the opportunity to actually introduce Amy here. Amy puts together our CDBG program annually. She's put together a slate of items in which we would expend the monies that are given to us through the Community Development Block Grant Program that we utilize to make some improvements to our community, and this is a federal program, so there are very stringent guidelines that we must follow in order to make use of and receive this money annually. So Amy, do you want to outline a little bit of the program we've proposed this year?
Yes. So for folks that aren't familiar, we are not, we're not a large enough community to work directly with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, but we are a subrecipient of Oakland County, and Oakland County is big enough, and so it trickles down through Oakland County, and so then Oakland County has additional rules that they put on, but they also handle the home improvement loan, which we would have to do as, like Royal Oak has to do, because they're a big enough city. So we have requirements as far as the minimum amount, and how many projects we can do, and what types of projects. For the most part, they would like to see everything with bricks and mortar, but we get about $31,000, $32,000, down from $90,000 in 1996, and that's, as our GPW director is telling me, it's just not enough money, it's a really small amount, but it is what it is. So only 30% of our funding can be used for sort of soft things, like yard services, helping seniors mow their lawn or shovel their walks, disabled services, purchasing large-print books, or providing money to Haven through Oakland County that helps Berkeley residents. So we're capped on those soft costs, and there's only so many eligible projects that are bricks and mortar that make sense in kind of the $22,000 range. So we've been doing a lot of sidewalk ramps, and that's a good thing. And so this is essentially the same mix you saw last year, the projects have changed, we're doing, we're, again, Congress has to appropriate, oop, I lost my mic. Congress has to appropriate the money, so we always, it's about, it's going to be about $31,000, it might be a little bit more, it might be a little bit less, and so we're looking at about $22,000 for sidewalk ramps, and $3,200 for yard services that our Recreation Department administers, large-print books, $3,200, and then $3,000 is being recommended for Haven. And you do have to open and close the public hearing, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Great, well, thank you. With that, this one still works anyway, with that context, it's chair's discretion to open the public hearing, so I declare the public hearing open. Please.
Good evening. Is this working? No, okay, we're all right, we're wearing it.
I apologize.
So, that's okay. My name is Katie Lamb, I'm a resident here at Berkeley, I live on Eaton, and I'm here today just to represent Haven. First of all, I just want to say thank you all for your support in the past with the grant money that we were able to receive from you. Last year, for example, we were able to serve 24 survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault from the City of Berkeley. So I just want to quickly pass out, I have a fact sheet from 2015, along with a brochure, if that's okay, to pass out to you all. Again, I just wanted to come here to state our thanks for your support in the past, and to see if you had any questions about any of our current services, or what we intend to do in the future.
Well, thank you for being here. Questions, comments? Councilmember Kadekko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protown. I just want to say thank you very much for all the work you do. It is very heartwarming to know that people like you and your organization are out there, and thank you.
Thank you.
Others? Likewise, I want to thank you and your organization for what you do. It's an unfortunate necessity that we need to have such a thing. Even one is a tragedy, and the fact that you're here to help makes it a little bit easier to at least try to make sense of. Councilmember Blanchard.
Just asking a question here. Would you explain for the residents who are watching on TV what the Haven does, how they contact them if they think there's something that needs to be looked at, or give us just a little more information about how they could interface with Haven?
Sure, of course. So Haven is Oakland County's only comprehensive program for helping survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. We offer a variety of different services, including a crisis line, which runs 24/7. That is a phone number that's available on our website, and I will read it out here as well. That is (248) 334-1284. We provide other additional services, including an emergency shelter for people that are fleeing any instance of intimate partner violence, and all of our services are available through calling our crisis line. We also provide counseling services and support to our clients as they're navigating the legal process through our social action program. And we do provide also forensic exams after a person has been assaulted. And then last but not least, to, just to kind of end on the hopeful note, we do have our prevention education team that goes out into K-12 schools and other organizations to help avoiding these sorts of instances from happening in the first place. And I do know that they have been active, for example, at Berkeley High School. I was able to see them present there, which is really great.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
When we got this, oh yeah, that's not working. When we got this packet, we posted on Berkeley Resident Forum. The one thing that, there were a number of people who commented on was, is there any way to use any of that money to somehow help mitigate our rat issue? I don't know if there is or not, but I said I would relay the idea.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else coming to the microphone, I declare the public hearing closed. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight on tonight's regular agenda?
Resolution number R-3916, matter of adopting the Community Development Block Grant Program application for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve R-3916?
To approve.
Support.
Support. Motion was made by Councilmember Kadekko, with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten.
The program's outlined for you in your packet, unfortunately, there is not, rodent mitigation is not a permitted use from a wide-scale approach. I don't know if any, some of these working? There you go. My apologies. I'm not sure that rodent protection, or rodent mitigation is one of the permitted uses that City of Berkeley will be able to take care of, although one of the things we are doing, though, is yard services. That's one of the options we have. Because fighting rodents is a yard-to-yard battle, you might see some spillover effect for somebody who previously perhaps could not take care of their yard, allowing for rodent harborage, they could maybe take use of one of these programs and fix that problem for that yard. So you might get a small impact that way, but as far as taking a broad-spectrum approach, unfortunately, it's not one of the permitted uses. And I say, I did this in a previous community, so I'm kind of recalling somewhat off the top of my head, but they change every year, so I'm happy to get the nod of approval on that. You do have the full option in front of you, Ms. Vanson outlined it, so I think it's a good use of these monies, and it's a way to invest in the City of Berkeley. So it's one of the ways that we're utilizing the resources to make a better community.
Thank you. Any discussion, additional questions? Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the barrier-free improvements, is there an area limitation? Does that have to be in one of the special areas, or can we do that anyplace?
You can do it anyplace, because it's a presumed benefit for barrier-free. Anything barrier-free can be throughout the city.
Thank you.
Great. Other questions, comments? All right, thank you. I appreciate the comments during the public hearing. Thank you for the additional clarity on what's in and out of scope, and the kinds of things that we can do. Again, it's sad that we've gone from over $90,000 in the past to 30-something now, but at least we're making every dollar count to the best of our ability, and I want to thank you all for your help with that. So with that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-3916?
Kadekko?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. This motion has passed. Ms. Boucher, would you now please read item number nine on tonight's regular agenda?
Motion number M. 8816, matter of approving the purchase of seven mounted radar units and two handheld radar units from Stalker Radar Applied Concepts Incorporated, 2609 Technology Drive, Plano, Texas, 75074, at a cost of $18,123 from account number 101310982000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve M. 8816?
Motion to approve.
Support.
A motion was made by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Councilmember Kadekko. Mr. Baumgarten.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Our Deputy Chief is, is available to give some of the specifics on how we came to purchase these items. I do want to note from a process standpoint, instead of going out and handling this as an individual entity where the city of Berkeley put out an RFP, we actually took advantage of a statewide purchasing collective called MyDeal. So, it's, it's different than our typical process, but it yields basically the same result. People have to, they have agreed upon pricing for certain items, and we take advantage of it, not as a once-little community, but we get all the benefits of that collective purchasing agreement. So, I applaud the police, or the Public Safety Department on utilizing such a great service for, for this item. Mr. Crum, or Deputy Chief Crum?
Thank you. Appreciate that. I have not been in a patrol car in a long time. So, before I decided or tried to figure out which radars we should purchase, I actually asked our Officer Betts to assist me with that, and he did a wonderful job. Looked through all the different quotes on MyDeal. He actually found MyDeal and brought that to us, and then showed the different quotes on MyDeal. And he actually was instrumental in this whole process. So, if you have any questions, I'd love for you to ask him to, Officer Betts, because he actually understands all the radar works, and I'm not sure I even know which way to point it anymore. So, I have, I brought the brains of the operation here, so.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Questions, comments? Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. The company you selected is Stalker Radar Applied Concepts. They're a fairly substantial company. Aren't they the ones that the state police use?
Yes, the state police uses Stalker radars in all their units.
So, all, all the state police cars have?
The entire state of Michigan in all the state police cruisers and their motorcycles all use Stalker radars.
I guess that's a pretty good endorsement. If the state uses it, it probably would work for us.
Yes. It's called Stalker.
What's, what's the, the timeframe from the time that we, we agree to this, that we can have these in the cars? Because I know the ones we got now are in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, yeah. Only one of them works properly anymore.
But we'll note, it's always the one you see in the neighborhood. It's always the one right in front of you.
I refuse to give the car number. As soon as we get approval, we can order them as soon as tomorrow, and it's a 21-day ship time. And then, as soon as they arrive, Officer Scott Smith has agreed to install them in patrol cars. So, he would do that just on duty and just replace them. It's just, it's just a matter of running some cables through, and, and their cigarette plugs, so they just plug right into the cigarette lighter. Real simple installation.
The, the other good point about this is that we're, this, this cost includes 60 months warranty on all of our patrol car radars?
Yes. Standard warranty on the dash-mounted units is three years. We opted to get a 24-month extended warranty to bring that total to five years, in case anything were to go wrong.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Officer Betts, for assisting Deputy Chief. Councilmember Blanchard asked about the timeline already. I was going to ask. Obviously, this is being used throughout the country now, these types of, from Stalker, or these types of units where you can get them in front and back or whatever. But my concern is, how long do they last? Did they talk about the age of the equipment? I mean, we're using 10-year-old equipment now. Is there any time?
We're, we're looking to get another 10 years out of the new units. We've warranted them for five years. That's the longest that they allow the warranty, the extended. We're hoping to get another 10 years out of it. It just depends on how often they're used. Police cars get pretty beat up. They're, they're driven in some pretty rough conditions, so equipment does get bounced around. But that's why we opted for that extended warranty, in case something did happen within the first five years. After that, we take a chance. But these have lasted for 10, and they're at the end of their service life now. So, we feel that we can get probably another 10 years out of these units.
Is there anything we do with the old equipment? Scrap it, or?
We're just going to recycle it. At the electronics recycling facility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, I want to thank you both as well for helping ensure that our, our team has the, the right equipment that we need to help ensure the streets are safe for pedestrians, bicyclists, and as well as other vehicles out there. So, thank you for your diligence with this. Thanks for finding the, the statewide purchasing program to help bring cost affordability to this equipment as well. I think it's, it's time and money well spent.
Yes.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And with that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M. 8816?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Grovelin?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Motion has passed. Thank you. So, we've now reached the communications portion of tonight's regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please let us know who will be going first?
Councilmember Turbrak?
All right. Councilmember Turbrak?
Thank you. I actually have nothing substantive this evening. I just want to wish everybody a Happy Thanksgiving. Go Lions. We have a parade coming up as well. All the Parks and Rec events that I was going to talk about today are actually not until after the next meeting, which is why I'm holding off now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grovelin?
The tree board met on Monday night. The, the biggest announcement was Mr. Schuler, the head of D P W, actually met with the residents of Harvard. So, from Woodward to Cass, Harvard is going to be completely redone, curb to curb, in the spring. And he had a little, literally a meet in the street with the residents, brought some chairs out. About 40 of the 100 residents that are going to be affected came out into the street and asked general questions. As he said, it was a basic overview right now, so he doesn't have specifics as to how you're actually going to be able to get in and out of your home yet, which a lot of residents were concerned about. But it was a great turnout, and you had to talk to them individually and address their concerns, especially about trees in regard to the tree board. A lot of the trees will have to be completely removed. A lot of big, beautiful, full-grown trees. It'll just be next to impossible to do a complete street and water main redo. But the tree board is all over it, making sure they do their best to preserve what they can, and they will absolutely be replacing as many trees as are uprooted. Furthermore, they hope to meet with J.D. Hart after the holiday to discuss with him tree ordinances in other cities, to see if we can or should update ours specifically related to builders removing trees completely from lots when they build new builds. They're very concerned with that, trying to preserve as many trees as possible with new construction that's going on in the city. And the final count of trees on private property that were purchased for this year is 109. A lot of residents are concerned why the trees haven't been put in yet, because it has to wait till the first hard frost, which hasn't happened yet, but very, very soon. And they, they have no December meeting, because they will be walking in the Holiday Lights Parade on the 3rd. And lastly, the Planning Commission meets tomorrow, so we can see you all right back here tomorrow night, where they have, will discuss a new site plan and their own regulations, their board reviews, their regulations, and discussing the new state laws on medical marijuana, so it will not disappoint our excitement tomorrow. Okay. Thank you all. Have a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to officially welcome Sabrina and look forward to working with you. I want to thank the D P W. They're out there in this cold weather even today, working on water mains and water leaks, and they do it throughout the night, and I can't thank them enough for their hard work. The last day of leaves is, or the last day to have your leaves ranked out is the last day of November. Will be the last pickup, you know, that week, so they, I want to remind people of that. Lot of confusion, lot of time when there's a holiday. For the people that get their trash picked up on Friday, it will be Saturday this week. So, try not to put it out on Friday. I know a lot of people get confused with that. A shout-out to Parks and Rec Advisory Board Chairman and Z B A Board Member Mike Kirby, who's recovering after surgery. He's doing really well. I spoke with him earlier today. December 3rd, I'm looking forward to seeing everyone at the Snowman Shuffle and at the Holiday Lights Parade, and I'm sure it won't be cold. On a sad note, this community is blessed with a lot of good people, and especially at the Parks and Recreation Department and the senior, through the senior programs. And last month, we lost a member, passed away, Art Secord. He was 100 years young. He was a graduate from Berkeley High School, and he was there when they donated the 175 Years of Excellence. Art was right there with the plaque, and we're definitely going to miss him. And my thoughts are with Maggie Morton, his longtime companion. And then, just the other night, we lost a very good member, and Josephine Brewer can appreciate this, Tom Cusick. Tom was a 2010 award winner of the Margaret Whitehead Award for the State of Michigan Parks and Recreation Department. He was the leader of the Wii Bowling that everyone goes to every Tuesday. Just a great man, always had a nice word to say about everyone. And I know that Wii Bowling will not be the same for those that bowl on Tuesday afternoons, but our thoughts are with the Cusick family. Arrangements are pending right now. And I want to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
Okay, first of all, several of us attended the fundraisers last week. There were two of them at Patrick Jase. The one for Wednesday was Friends of Parks and Rec, and Thursday was Holiday Lights, and there were wonderful turnouts for both of them. So, I want to thank everybody who came for those, for those organizations, and also Patrick Jase for being so willing to host this type of fundraiser. And then, as a reminder, the Holiday Spirit Awards, I'll give you that email address, BerkeleyBAC@gmail.com, and have your nominations of a friend, a neighbor, yourself, whoever, in by December 12th. And then, at the, the second meeting in December, the awards will be presented. And there will be three places. It won't be one, two, three. It'll just be three winners. And that's all I have tonight. Happy Thanksgiving.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things. Berkeley hometown holidays are more than just the Snowman Shuffle and the, and the Holiday Lights Parade. We have discounts and holiday treats at your favorite Berkeley stores and restaurants, brass bands, carollers, games, horse-drawn carriage rides, community art projects, holiday crafts, and cookie decorating, vintage trolley rides. That's 12:30 to 4:30 stops along 12 Mile and Coolidge. There'll be a petting zoo, and you get to meet one of Santa's reindeer. It's, it's one of the real ones, too. 2:00 PM at 12 Mile at Tyler. I don't think it's Rudolph, though. The Holiday Lights Parade at 5:30 PM, and of course, early that morning is the Snowman Shuffle. Another thing that's, that's going on at the end of this month is shop and dine local Berkeley bucks. The Chamber has got an activity going on. Visit participating Berkeley businesses on November 25th, 26th, 27th to receive a Berkeley bucks good for $5.00 off a purchase of $15.00 or more of regularly-priced items from November 28th to December 24th. And the participating businesses in that are 24 Seconds Bar and Grill, Amici's Pizza, City Style, Council Resale, Cryo Works, Mediou Boutique, Our Green Topia, Patrick Jase Irish Pub, Peninsula's, the Respiteit Warehouse, and Twisted Shamrock. So, you can go there and get some Berkeley bucks and spend them later on. So, that's what the Chamber of Commerce is working on. So, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, sir. One of those days that Councilmember Blanchard was talking about happens to be Small Business Saturday. It's always a Saturday following Thanksgiving. We've got a ton of great Berkeley businesses, all very small, all would be perfect to be shopped at during Small Business Saturday. And that's always, you got Thanksgiving Thursday, don't fight the crowds on Friday, and shop everything on Small Business Saturday. So, it's a great day to walk around and shop in Berkeley. I was, I was with my family last Saturday during the kickoff of the holiday shopping season, and we had a great time walking around, and the weather hadn't turned yet, so everyone was real happy. I'd also like to note, I attended the Veterans Day commemoration out front. It was a wonderful ceremony. I want to thank everybody who had a hand in in putting that together. It was very moving, very appropriate. It was, it was a very nice time. And also, rats. We're working right now to put out new and better information on how we can fight rodents. We invited a speaker for one of our December meetings. We're still working out the date, but I believe on the 19th, we'll have a speaker coming in to discuss how to fight rodents house to house, and what, some of the things that the city is doing, some of the things that the county is doing, to try to get those rodent numbers way down. And then, last, like everyone else, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I will specifically echo your sentiments on Go Lions. So, thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Attorney?
Nothing to report tonight, but Happy Thanksgiving to everybody and to our local business people. Prosperous Black Friday and Local Business Saturday.
Excellent.
It's that time of year.
It is indeed, and it's-
Spend your money. Spend your Berkeley bucks.
Berkeley bucks. It's that time of the meeting for me to offer final, final comments. Stephen Keeg once said, "No audience ever complained about a presentation or speech being too short." Once again, Stephen Keeg said, "No audience has ever complained about a presentation or speech being too short." So, I will attempt to summarize in six sentences or less. A couple of, a couple of quick things here. First, welcome again. Thank you to our finance director. Glad that you are here. There's a semicolon in there. Ms. Boucher, thank you and your team for all of your great work with the, with the recent election, which went very smoothly and, and accurately. The Downtown Development Authority, D D A, is interviewing candidates for the full-time director role, and they're processing the input and feedback from the Robina Plaza Experiment. The Historical Committee has a new sign on, on Coolidge showing our new museum entrance. Please feel free to, to swing by there Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00, and most Wednesdays from 10:00 to 1:00. There is a joint session with City Council, Planning Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals on the afternoon of Friday, December 9th. The topic is professional development and training, and the agenda specifics will be published ahead of time in accordance with our processes there. And that leaves me with one sentence left to say, have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy the time with your family. Appreciate all that we have here and all that we continue to build. It's been an honor to be here tonight. And with that, I'd like to ask if there is a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Kadekko?
Support.
Support by Councilman Stedman, Councilwoman Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Turbrak?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Grovelin?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes. This November 21st, 2016, meeting council, council meeting is now adjourned.
Didn't hurt him by that gavel. He's good.